To the, what are we, December 18th Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting, I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. There's a flag hidden in the corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. All right, our last meeting of the year, our next meeting for 2025 will be January 15th. Put that on your calendar. All right, as the board had a chance to look it over, the November 20th meeting minutes as provided.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept those minutes as presented?
I'll send it.
But I'll second that one. Any questions?
Why no?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First item on the agenda, PDMD LLC, 26 Smith Clover Road, review and discuss documents submitted for amended site plan and ARB for proposed more bay garage. Said property is located at 26 Smith Clover Road in Central Valley and is known as a Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 230, Block 6, Lot 8, Dot 2. Good evening, sir. How are you?
How are you? So, um, we attended the meeting, obviously, back in October and, um, received some comments and questions and requests for further information with the site plan and setbacks amongst some other stuff. So, everything was submitted, um, October 17th, via email and in person. On December 4th, you know, we then had a quick conversation in regards to, um, an email I received about some further information, uh, that was being requested. And then December 4th, or correction, 13th, um, we received another email, pretty extensive email from, uh, from the building department, um, actually from Natalie, um, I guess with more comments and questions and concerns, um, with, you know, they wanted more information and I guess, you know, and further research, you know, talking about a traffic consultant meeting with the highway superintendent, the building inspector, ESO, the emergency services. My first question that I have, you know, before we get into that is, um, why two months after the meeting in October did all these questions and concerns arise?
Because your application doesn't get reviewed until it's scheduled beyond the agenda again.
Okay.
There's, there's 60 applications.
But a lot of, a lot of it was repetitive to what we discussed during the first meeting, which was back in October. A lot of it was requested, discussed, and then when this came along, the same exact stuff was requested and discussed along with numerous, numerous other topics that are just so far-fetched from what we're doing.
Nothing is far-fetched, it's compliance with the code.
Okay, so, you know, like prime example, asking me to meet with a traffic consultant, you know, have a traffic consultant come in, it's a four-car garage.
I understand that, it's a modification to a site plan, it's what every applicant goes through.
Okay, pedestrians in and out, they're asking for, they want to know the route of travel of my, my employees from my business, which really has nothing to do with PDMD at all, they want to know their route of travel. What does one thing have to do with, because everyone knows me on a personal level and they're just assuming?
They're asking how the site is going to be used. You're making a modification to a site, you're requesting a site plan modification, and they're asking how the site's going to be used. It's no other question than any other applicant that would get in front of this one.
But it was explained in the letter, in the summary that they were, that Kelly requested of how the, how the site was going to be used. It was explained in detail, probably two, three paragraphs on exactly how the site was going to be used, strictly storage, you know, then to fire back, asking, you know, their route of travel, where they're going, their time of operation, it has nothing to do with that, it's just a simple four-car garage, you know, that we're looking to erect and put up, and I honestly feel like we're getting treated like we're putting up a high-rise building, an apartment building, or some commercial strip mall, you know, so, you know, with that being said, most of you guys know me, I spent 15 years as the fire chief here, only recently resigning at the end of 2022. Never once did anything across my time as chief in that 15 years, and my father, who was right before me, his nine years, did anything come across for a four-car garage. Developments, strip malls, large developments, cul-de-sacs, yeah, we met with them, checked the radius and the turning of the truck and comments and questions, but nothing ever for a four-car garage going up, whether it be commercial, residential, or whatever it might be. I've seen a million buildings come, be erected since I was in as chief, and never once did we ever get questioned, and now I'm being told I gotta sit with ESO and get their opinion. So, I mean, I'll just fast forward, you know, and I know the boards made numerous comments, you know, on and off the record, how things have changed, yes, they have, and these are the reasons why. So with that, we are going to respectfully rescind our permit and our application and request whatever refund we, we can get back from our escrow account and the permit fees.
Next item, Crystal Springs Holding, 110 Seven Springs, review and, review and discuss revised materials for proposed four-lot subdivision, said property is located at 110 Seven Spring Road in Highland Mills and is known as a Village of Woodbury Tax Map, 213 Block 1, Lot 17.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, I'm Stephen Green, uh, Mike Morgany had a conflict tonight, so he sent me instead.
Welcome.
Thank you, it's good to see you. Um, so, I'm not really up to speed on the job, I just know it's four lots, he was at a certain point where there were comments that came back from H2M, and, um, he was okay with correcting and modifying as needed, sending it back, so.
Okay.
I think that's pretty much what we were doing.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, you know, our comments on the application this round were, um, really substantiated on the fact that with the most recent submission, the applicant submitted the SWIP for the first time, so there were a lot of comments on that, which, um, you know, it sounds like the applicant will revise the SWIP to, um, comply with our memo and the code requirements and such. Also, the applicant submitted documentation on the quantity and quality of all the wells in the proposed subdivision, so previously you had received that for just one well, um, now they have the proof for adequate quantity for all of them, and the quality results show that there are, uh, levels of iron and manganese higher than, uh, the MCL permitted by the state, and accordingly, there will be treatment, uh, proposed for those homes where those levels exceed the limit. Uh, one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting was the septic systems had to be designed to accommodate the backwash for those filtration systems, the applicant has confirmed that they are. So really, uh, we had some comments, minor comments, on the information that was submitted as part of the well drillers' logs, um, but ultimately, again, I think the applicant can address those. And then the last thing that, uh, changed from the prior submission that I think is worth just noting for the board is that the grading for all of the lots was changed, so they are proposing several retaining walls, none of them extend within the right-of-way, which is something that the highway consultant, or the highway, um, the street, sorry, the village streets superintendent, uh, had previously opined that he would prefer not happen, um, but we do have some comments on the ultimate, uh, you know, cut-and-fill analysis, where the steep slopes will ultimately fall, and how that impacts the net lot area calculations under the code. So again, those are the three big changes, I think, since the applicant's last submission, uh, you know, which were the substance of our memo, and, you know, unless the board has any specific questions on that, uh, you know, we'll just assume to review the revised materials once they're received. Oh, uh, and then just one other thing is, you know, the board is aware, I think, that this application is subject to the moratorium, the public hearing was closed previously, and SEACR has been, was concluded with an egg deck, um, so really, no action can be taken on this application until, you know, the applicant seeks a hardship waiver from the village board and/or the moratorium is ceased. So, I think, you know, really, the applicant is furthering the plans, you know, getting it to like a final, uh, you know, a final point so that when they, when the board can act on it, um, you're able to.
Sidewalks, I think we've got to make a determination on sidewalks, too, right?
Okay, sure, yeah.
Um, so it's a three-lot subdivision, this board, the code does require sidewalks, but this board, this board does have the ability to waive that requirement if we don't feel they're necessary, or they're going to be a burden or hindrance on, um, the applicant. Um, and I know we talked about it, I don't, we don't, I don't think we actually ever came to a decision if we want to exclude the sidewalks here or not.
Do you think any of the sidewalks require pre-removal, if we're going to require your sidewalks?
Um, so I think that pretty much the applicant intends to clear the full right-of-way, so the right-of-way would be including where the sidewalks would be, um, so, you know, that designated portion, 10 feet on either, either side of the street, the sidewalks would be constructed within that, um, but I think, from what I recall, the discussions, I don't think there are side, there are not sidewalks on Seven Springs, um, you know, so the sidewalks would kind of be standalone for this cul-de-sac, you know, which from a practicality standpoint is something for the board to consider, um, but yeah, so as far as the trees, um, you know, again, the board talked about the Environmental Conservation Commission, and you were going to review tree removal part of the individual lots, but you're right, that removal for the street now would be considered, so, um, it's a good question.
So, the, the further Natalie's point, so there aren't, this is Seven Springs here, so Seven Springs has no sidewalks on it, so you would just, really, if you put sidewalks in here, they'd be for the four houses and they would go nowhere, except for the four houses.
I don't see what the.
It's not like it's a 50, it's not like it's a 50 lot.
I don't see many.
I don't, I don't either.
I don't either.
I still would like sidewalks myself personally, because in the future, future-proofing a site or further developments, I think it's important, but that's just my, my take.
And I would, I would, I see, I would tend to agree with you, but based on where the, the land is located, I don't think they really have the option to expand, like to make the subdivision any bigger than the four lots that are in there right now. I could see if like, they were like cutting like 100 acres and they were just doing like a little section now, but this is one lot, it's got houses that way to the side.
I think too, um, to that point, like for instance, if the applicant was to come in for an expansion of the subdivision and say, subdivide the larger lot at the back of the cul-de-sac, sidewalks at that time could be considered, you know, a mitigate, an off-site improvement and a mitigation measure for safety for pedestrians, um, so like if it became warranted in the future, I don't think that you are precluded from requiring that from a future, um, more expanded application.
If I would, I would say for now, it's, I would, I would exclude the sidewalks and then if they do come back, we could always.
Get them back in.
Get them back in. Board's okay with that?
I'm good.
I guess, you have any questions for us?
No, I'm good, um, I was gonna say, there's nothing, there's no sidewalks out there.
Yeah, I just had a note that we never, we talked about sidewalks, we never actually told you what we wanted to do, so if you're gonna do another submit, we might as well.
Trail into the woods.
Yeah, pretty much. Um, I think that's it for this one, right?
Uh, I think so, yep.
You got off easy tonight, as a standing.
I can go shopping again.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
All right, have a good night.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, Ridge Lot, three-lot subdivision, uh, Ridge Road, three-lot subdivision, review and discuss materials submitted for a proposed subdivision, site plan, ARB, and ridge preservation for three-lot subdivision, said props are located at 345 Ridge Road, and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 204, Block 1, Lot 14, Dot 2. Good evening.
Good evening, Joel Mann, behalf of the applicant. Proposed three-lot subdivision, 345 Ridge Road, has been before the board in, uh, 2019, then we had a pause for a while, we came back a couple of months ago, and we continued with the same, uh, same configuration, and we adjusted, addressed all the comments from the last open comments from that, 2019. We just, I'm not sure if the consultants want to start first, but maybe to save you time, or try to summarize, so I got the comment, the memo from, from H2M today, so there's a list of a lot of, uh, small technical items that we need to address, and everything we can address that. I will just touch on some bullet points that we might need to discuss here, um, so, so first about the SWIP, we, um, we will provide the SWIP report, so it's basically a small report, accordingly to, to that type of development, since there is only less than 25 percentage, um, and we will, in the same time, the DPW is also waiting for that submission, so we will, once we have that, we'll submit it to you, we'll submit it to the DPW. There's some clarifications that actually, John Queenan, if he has a question, he will coordinate with you, as, uh, might be some minor clarifications. We will update the trees, the conflict on the numbers from the 80 to the 115, and propose the mitigation on the locations that we plan to do that. Yet now regarding traffic consultant, so the question, is this a three-lot subdivision, three driveways, this was submitted to DPW, actually, they pushed us, uh, for, remember, that was still in 2019, originally, we started with two driveway quads, so it was one shared driveway, I think it was the DPW or you board coordinate should be three separate. If there's any need for us to hire a traffic consultant, get a report, we will do that if you feel that, or you have some comments specifically on that, that you want us to address.
Do you want me to respond? Okay, sure, um, well, the first thing, um, you know, the board will, you know, given that you had asked to have a direct communication with me and John Queenan regarding any technical questions he had, you know, I'll defer to the board to authorize that, um, and then as far as, like you said, I mean, this is primarily being reviewed by the county, um, for the curb cuts.
Yeah.
So.
That's my question, if you still need more than they will require, because we're coordinating with that and that either way.
Just trying to see.
So you have it noted on, on the 2E.
What is it, 2E?
That's.
You know what page, sorry.
It's page.
My problem, because I.
Don't see page, no, I'm sorry, it's under, it's, it's under E.
I'm clearing, no.
Three, four, five, page six, from the pages, you have traffic circulation and access.
Oh, okay, here you go.
It looks like you're just looking for.
I think you just want to be able to show the site distances.
Yep.
At each driveway, which the county's gonna ask for, but that would be.
I believe we provided that, and if, Phil, if you have to look at it, take a look, but the county has asked us, and we provided the details for the county at that point.
And as far as, we do the referral to ESO, we'll make, we'll send it to them and have them look to just make sure their trucks are gonna be able to make the, the turns, the turns in.
Into the driveway.
Into the driveways.
Okay.
And that they're okay with the, uh, the grades, because after a certain point, it gets too steep for them, and the truck's bottom, the truck's bottom out.
Um, next thing, Army Corps of Engineers, so we, John, will, will put in an application to them, we had already in 2019, we had, we had discussions, they were okay with the council, but we'll, now we have to finalize more the plan, we'll submit an application to them and get this moving meanwhile. Now, number four regarding the, the zone, the buffer and the riparian zone.
Yeah.
So, that was discussed at the 2019, um, so I believe the most impacted is Lot 1, and also, we can move up everything, but I think it was discussed at that time to keep it below, so we can save as much vegetation as we could, plus to have the septic field away, rather have the septic field away from the wetlands area. There is the driveway on Lot 3 that is also in the area, the other lot, you don't see it on this sheet, I believe it's, if you go to sheet, um, it's Sheet 3 on the site plan.
Which sheet?
Uh, 3.
3?
I know one of them, you show the 50-foot and the 100-foot riparian areas, and that actually is related to the wetland to the north of this property.
Correct.
So specifically, those comments are regarding Lot 3 and disturbance within that area.
Yeah, that, that's where we're on discussing, if you go to the tab.
I don't know, oh, there it is, yeah.
Yep, so, at that, originally, we had the driveway of Lot 3 together with Lot 2 for that reason, but in order to minimize the actual wetland disturbance, uh, we did it here, also a recommendation from the county to separate the two driveways. So, again, we are ready to update that and change that if you feel that, I believe, my understanding is, it's in the board discretion to make, waive that or approve that that way, so.
Right, so, um, what we typically do for the board when applications are impacted by the water quality protection overlay and any disturbance in the riparian and 100-foot buffer, is we provide the code requirements and the specific criteria that the board needs to consider in order to make a finding to either permit that disturbance and, um, you know, improvement within those areas. So, I think, you know, my suggestion to the applicant would be to, you know, explain in writing to the board why the disturbance and improvements are necessary, um, you know, and how they, you know, meet the intent of the code, um, you know, in this particular instance, where the applicant is showing the driveway for Lot 3, I think that it's an existing, um, you know, gravel road or, um, like I think that the grading there shows that the access to the land, you know, to the plant, I guess it's the east, um, is in that location, so.
Correct.
Really what they're proposing here is some grading to widen and improve that access to the lot, um, you know, and again, where the 50-foot riparian zone is, is it's that first arc, um, yes, exactly, that line there, um, which, you know, under your code, you really are looking for no activity to occur within that area, um, and again, there are specific, uh, criteria that you'll want to look at, and they're repeated in our memo for, you know, I think it was probably a future date if the board wants to review that, and then in the 100-foot buffer area, that's where there's a little bit more discretion. So, um, you know, I think our memo asks the applicant and the board to consider if there's an opportunity to kind of remove all disturbance in those areas, and I guess, you know, it's important for the board too to consider, you know, if they pull the driveway south, say, to get out of the riparian zone for the wetland to the north, they're really encroaching on the wetland to the south that isn't necessarily protected by these buffers, so, you know, you're kind of like paying Peter to rob Paul, oh, that's not right, right, is it robbing Paul to pay Peter? Yes, okay, so, um, you know, so that's something I think that the board will want to weigh, um, you know, in consideration of those findings, and to Joel's point, uh, when the 2019 application was reviewed, and I think we talked about it at the last meeting, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they did show that joint access, I think actually from Lot 3, right, it was Lot 3, the Lot 3 driveway split to Lot 2 and 3.
Yep.
Um, you know, and, and at that time, the board also opined that it would be better to have the separate access, because there does tend to be some, you know, shared maintenance, you know, issues, and, you know, where do the delivery drop-offs occur, and mail deliveries and things that can become kind of an issue with shared driveways, um, those are just like minor, uh, practical things to consider, but anyways, that's my long-winded way of saying that the board has something to consider here with all of that.
So the wetlands actually end here, and then we're just in the overlay?
Uh, the wetland is actually to the north, so, um, if you look at where that arc is, the 50-foot arc, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So what's this hashed area again then?
That's also a wetland.
Right, that's.
Yep, so they're not connected, I don't believe.
No.
And the map on the village's water quality protection, the, the map only shows the wetland to the north, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So you can see, uh, this is the end of Texas overlaying at it, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
Yeah.
It's like, it's six one-half dozen of another, right?
Yeah, well, and then.
But if this is already somewhat improved.
Right, there is, the, you know, the grading there, you know, there's no wetland in that area currently.
If you go, if you go to Sheet 2.
What's that?
It would be less of an impact.
Yeah, they're improving.
Yeah. The roadway without creating a new one.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly, I mean, if they moved it south, then they're.
Here you can see it on the existing map, that you have existing driveway.
What's the difference between the state's DEC wetland and the federal wetland?
Yeah, so, um, well, right now, for like a federal wetland permit, you have to, um, be disturbing the wetland itself, there's like no buffer on a federal wetland, so, from the state's perspective, there is a 100-foot buffer area, so like, if a, you know, in this case, the applicant, um, was impacting the 100-foot area around the wetland, the state would still require a permit where the federal agency would not. Um, you, these wetlands are still protected by your code, which also has a 100-foot buffer, um, and for which you will be reviewing this application under your local freshwater wetlands law.
Both, both wetlands under our code, or just the DEC one?
Uh, both.
Both.
Yeah, yeah, so in this case, the, um, wetlands to the south are governed by the Army Corps of Engineers, so from a federal perspective, as well as your local code.
Would it, if you speak to him as you suggested earlier, could it let them contact you directly to work out some of these details?
Well, yeah, I'm assuming this matter is probably not what John wants to talk to me about, but maybe some of our other comments on like the septic systems and, you know.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Natalie, Natalie can't make a decision on this, this is something we have to make the decision on.
No, but they're not talking about decisions, I'm talking about exchange of information to, so we can base our decisions.
Sure, yeah, as long as the board's comfortable with that, um, and, you know, if you would prefer it, I could always provide you with sort of a summary of what was discussed.
What you normally do.
Sure.
Would this be stay in gravel, would you be putting asphalt there?
I think we proposed asphalt here.
It says paved, so.
Yeah, would you be opposed to that section that goes through the, uh, overlay, putting impervious pavers there or gravel, something like that instead?
No, I don't have any issue with that.
I think, I think that would at least lessen.
Yeah, lessen the impact.
Lessen the impact then.
Yeah, you got the grass pavers you can put in.
What's up?
They make the grass pavers, you can put in.
That's what I'm saying, the impervious, where the, the grass grows, we just did it up at shops, the entranceway is all impervious up there.
Would you keep it to just the 100-foot buffer, or the, the 50? Or you're just saying the whole thing?
No, I was, wherever it crosses, so I guess it would be from.
Into the.
Here, I mean, that's up to the applicant, if the applicant wanted to do the whole thing impervious, they could do it, my ask would be where it cross, where the driveway crosses the buffer.
Wait a minute.
That those sec, that, that section at least be impervious, but they're more than welcome if they wanted to do the whole thing.
Yeah, and, you know, and it might even be practical to start it at like where the wetland begins to the south, um, and then also that has something to, that may, the county may want to weigh in on that as well, but.
Yeah, the county will probably want the first leg to be paved, so they are.
But that's usually, uh, an advisory comment that we can overall with, uh, a majority, isn't it?
Um.
Typically, those counties, those.
Yeah, so for subdivisions.
It's not even that, because it's not on the 2K or 9, it's DP, just DPW.
I forgot what the, I don't know what the, does the county have a, how far it has to be solid in?
Typically, they want to be at least 50 feet into the property.
Which you might even be there.
I have, we have.
Probably right.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, but I think the other thing too, Chris, to your point is, you know, if the applicant seeks preliminary subdivision approval now, they'll go to the county in between preliminary and final.
Right.
And then if there are any planned changes that need to be made because of the county's approval, they'll have to come back to you and present it before their final, so you'll be able to see like, okay, you know, we wanted this, the county required that, is it acceptable? Type of thing.
Yeah. Not putting sidewalks, right?
We have the, the, the driveway as a side, like a wide sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm saying though, the, it, it's on my list of questions to ask, we're not putting sidewalks in, right?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe just, the sidewalks would be around the homes and where the patios.
Right, they will have walkways around.
There's nothing on Ridge Road, that's why, that's why I'm asking, that's just a two-lane road with a covert on both sides.
Correct, it's nowhere where to connect to, so.
Sidewalk to nowhere.
Sidewalk to nowhere.
Be interesting, it'd be actually a great, people would be like, where the hell'd that come from? Why's there 100 feet of sidewalk that goes nowhere?
Because the plan is when the next people will build, you will.
Right, they'll just get a.
Whatever, so.
Future-proofing.
Yeah.
All right. Freshwater wetlands, we talked about the water quality.
The last thing, uh, I have one more, on the SEACR, you mentioning about the, um, about exemption from the village board, about to be in the sewer area, I believe in the beginning, we read. about exemption from the village board about to be in the sewer area. I believe in the beginning, we read the, it's in the first on two A.
Yep.
You're already discussing that. I think we settled that item at that time in two thousand and nineteen. I don't think we need anything.
Yeah, I think for that one, I just want Kelly to kind of weigh in on that and make sure that we're all squared away. But I think I tend to agree with you that because that property is not within the water and sewer area that, you know, a connection is not feasible and, you know, there's probably no real, real action, real more action on that.
Okay. I have a comment. The entity disclosure was signed by you, I think.
Yeah.
It can't be signed by you. It has to.
No.
It has to be signed by three forty five.
So it might, might be oversight mistake.
Okay.
I will check on that.
Just take a look. If, if it is, just have the owners.
Sure.
Sign that please. And at this time, are you just doing a subdivision and you're going to come back for A R B and Ridge?
Technically I have, at this point, I more or less have house designs on that. So.
It's up to you how you want to proceed. You can either do the subdivision and move forward the subdivision and then come back or we could.
We can do it at the same time. I just don't want to, the subdivision to be hold up for that. So I'm not sure exactly how the schedule.
So just when you res, because you have to resubmit anyway. So add the A R B onto that so that we can, we can put it all together and we can do the subdivision and the A R B and Ridge all at once. So that when we do the public hearing.
Right.
We should be, we can combine both of those because you're going to need a public hearing for the freshwater, for the site plan and then for most likely for A R B. So we could do all three.
We'll put in for the A R B because I have everything.
Yeah, we could do all three public hearings.
Since two thousand and nineteen until now, I hope they settled on the plan. I hope they will, they will keep it that way. So.
Well, that's on you if they keep changing their minds.
Exactly.
But once they come here, they get kind of locked in. So.
Right. So I will check it again, but I believe we are, at this point, we can, I can move forward with A R B.
Okay, good. So then probably after that next submission, we could probably schedule the public hearing then because we'll have everything.
Okay.
And then we can keep moving forward.
So what is the, so is this preliminary approval, is the preliminary subdivision approval? So that's going to happen after the next meeting, once we respond to that comments or is this now?
Um, yeah. Well, so first you have to have a complete application. So technically, um, you know, the information on the freshwater wetlands permit, that application technically needs to be submitted still. You know, obviously the A R B and Ridge preservation stuff that you suggested, the SWIP needs to be submitted for a complete application. And then at the next meeting, the board can authorize a public hearing. And then after that public hearing, you know, your next appearance would be the board, I think, making decisions on certain things like the water quality protection overlay. You know, and, and potentially acting on a draft resolution if they determine that it could be drafted at the public hearing.
So just, just to get the, the feeling. So with application when it's at that stage, so when, if we submit like the next two, three weeks to address all the comments with A R B, is that still going into the queue with all applications or since this is at that stage, it's being prioritized as it moves forward with the?
I, it goes back and we, we, I keep moving, cycling through the queue. So the sooner you get it in, the sooner you are.
Okay.
In the hopper and we can keep moving you up the.
I don't want to get this, forget the things that.
Well, that's why, that's why I suggested to you to get everything in together. So you're not. Peaceting it and just moves along. Cause even if you get site plan approval, then you can't, you can't do anything anyways. So.
Right. Okay.
Just one more second. Make sure I have all of my.
Sure.
I think that's all of my notes I have. Anybody have any other questions for Natalie or for the applicant?
No.
No? Natalie?
No, I think we've covered, you know, the big, the big things and, um, you know, as long as the board is okay with me speaking to John, then I'll do that, you know, if he has any questions.
I think the board's okay with that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the honor to be at the last meeting in two thousand and twenty four. So I hope to be at the first couple meetings in two thousand and twenty five. So.
It all depends on how quickly you can click your mouse.
We'll, we'll try. It's not, everyone, it depends on me. I will have it, but.
I hear you're a very efficient, you're a very efficient boss. I'm sure you'll get it done.
I'm trying. Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Have a very happy holiday.
Happy holidays.
You too.
Okay. Walmart storage containers. Review and discuss documents submitted for an amended site plan, special permit, fridge preservation, A R B for storage containers for Walmart in the Harriman Business Park. Said property is located on Larkin Drive and is known as the Village of Redback Maps. Section two, two, five, block one, lot seventy one dot one.
Chris, real quick question. Were we supposed to declare lead agency in the previous? Application?
Yeah. Give me one second. So I'm going to offer a motion that we declare ourselves lead agency for the Rid Road subdivision.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Evan.
Yep.
Sorry. Let me just switch screens. Walmart. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and.
Yeah. Uh, my name is Jeremy Eens. I'm Woodbury Engineers, representing Walmart in this matter. Walmart is proposing to store a maximum number of fifty four storage containers on their property within the parking lot. Fifty of these will be twenty foot long containers and four would be forty foot long containers. This is a conservative number. They're just, they're being conservative just in case they get to fifty four, but they don't anticipate actually getting that many. For example, last year they only used fifty four during the holiday season. I mean, not fifty four, thirty five during the holiday season. Of these fifty four containers, only seven to eight of them will actually be within the village of Woodbury. The rest will be within the town of Monroe. There was a question brought up, and I'm not sure why this wasn't included in the narrative about what will be stored in the containers. This will mainly be Christmas and seasonal items such as toys, Christmas decor, bikes. It is actually against Walmart policy to store dangerous items such as guns, chemicals, bullets, food, et cetera, in these containers. And they remain locked on the premises until they're unloaded.
So these are going to be unconditioned. These are just going to be like the shipping containers that you see on the ships?
Yep.
Okay. Does the board have questions? We have to before we go to Natalie? Natalie?
Sure. Um, yeah, I appreciate that sort of interlude because I think our memo did note, um, you know, some of those questions, you know, what is the need? You know, for these storage containers, what will they, you know, what's going to be inside of them? So, um, you know, now the applicant has kind of answered those questions. Our memo also asked, I guess you may have answered this already, but are they going to be exclusive for the use of Walmart?
Of course. This will be its last cycle. Game on.
Uh, to answer your question, yes, I believe they're exclusively used for Walmart purposes.
Okay. Cause I mean, your statement about, you know, it's Walmart's policy to not have like chemicals and guns and things stored in that. If another store had shipping containers in that area and they didn't have the same policy, you know, the board would want to maybe consider that. But, um, you know, that's helpful. I appreciate that. And I think you are going to have another submission, um, you know, addressing some of our other comments. So it would be good for the board to have what you stated here in writing, you know, in a narrative form, um, you know, on those, on those specific items. This is a site plan application. So the applicant is required to provide a plan with a bulk table. You know, showing compliance with like the setback and coverage requirements. Now, our memo notes that the location of the units obviously do not create additional impervious area because it's in a parking area. And also they do not infringe on your typical setback requirements. However, that form, that plan and bulk table are required under your code. So that should be submitted in the future. Regarding parking, it gets a little bit more complicated because this site, this site was approved as part of a business park. And it looked, in our files, it looked like prior reductions in parking were authorized. You know, either on the onset of the commercial center approval or as individual pad, pad lots were developed. So I think what the board needs to consider, you know, now the reduction of, I think we counted sixty two spaces, but the applicant should confirm that is whether or not it is within the twenty five percent that's permitted under your code. You know, for the overall site because all of the parking is really shared amongst these businesses. So the applicant, I think, needs to provide some additional information on, you know, what parking is required for the whole site, what exists currently and what waiver they're requesting. And, you know, our memo says that we kind of defer to fill on these things, but since you didn't provide a memo on this one, I'm just going to kind of reiterate some of the things that he would typically say.
That was my fault when I said it.
Sorry. That, um, you know, what we'll want to see is how the parking is actually utilized during peak times and how those spaces are occupied. You know, is there leftover parking, you know, on a peak basis, um, you know, to determine whether or not losing those spaces really are impactful to the site. And that's again, from a practical standpoint. So, um, yes, that's the parking comments we had. Obviously the water and sewer here, there is no additional increase based on this application. So I don't think that this is impacted by, oh, actually even more importantly, this site is served by Village of Harriman for Water and Orange County Sewer District. So this is not subject to your moratorium. I don't think any changes to the site are proposed, like curbing is not, you know, being relocated. So it's really just the implementation of putting these storage containers in an existing condition. So there's nothing really as far as like erosion and sediment control or stormwater that we have any comments on. One comment that we did have is in the parking area on the village side, because again, this application is bisected by the town of Monroe and the village of Woodbury border. Is that the storage containers will be located in that tiny lot. And because the storage containers, I think the smallest ones are twenty feet, um, a typical parking stall is eighteen feet. So the twenty feet and the twenty feet starts to narrow the travel with between that area. And will you, will Walmart be able to get in and out of there without any conflicts, um, you know, with those units? So that's something for your designer to consider. We did note that there are water and sewer easements in this area. So those legal documents should be provided to council for review. Technically this is under your code for A R B review. It's kind of unique. So, you know, we've suggested that the applicant submit a cut sheet for them, but I don't know, you know, if there might be like gray, red and yellow or something. I don't know. You know what I mean? So something for the applicant to kind of consider and submit for the board. An E A F needs to be submitted for you to initiate seeker and a public hearing is required. That's all I have.
One thing I would like to see is when you do a resubmital, um, actually showing the distance between the two containers with the doors open, how much room is going to be left between the containers here? Cause like Natalie was saying, so this is twenty and this is twenty and the doors are two feet each. Then you start cutting into how much room is actually.
Yes.
Down the middle. I mean, are you, in, in theory, even going to be able to get a high low or something?
Right.
In, in between those.
And we might, we might need to rearrange where these containers are located just to mitigate any transportation issues in there.
Yeah, I was even thinking about you guys getting the containers.
Right. Yes.
Back there initially.
Yeah. I'm not the one driving the trucks. I don't know how to do it, but.
Well, there, where there's a will, there's a way. But I mean, in practice, we've got to see if it works in practicality. And I'm also concerned if you do, if they do get a fire in these containers, does the fire department have enough room? They won't put a truck there, but do they have enough room to safely?
Right.
Operate with the doors open? Like, are they literally going to be sitting on top of another container trying to get into one container?
Right.
Even though you don't store anything flammable or combustible or anything like that, stranger things have happened.
Yes.
And to Natalie's point, you can see there's the site, the parking's actually been, I didn't think the parking got used. I never actually went and looked back there, but apparently people do park back there. So.
And that might be mainly for the tire and lube area if, if customers want to use that space.
Yeah. But if we get rid of, so we get rid of these spots where, you know, where are these people going to go, right? Are they employees or?
Yep.
Cause I'm sure as you may or may not be aware, there's a little bit of an issue in the Walmart parking lot with semis and RVs and.
No, I was not aware of that.
And campers and all sorts of other associated that take up a huge chunk of that lot. I think anybody that has driven this point is I'm not lying when I go there, right? I mean, there's any given time, there's about a dozen RVs parked there.
Yeah.
And then.
That's the case with a lot of the Walmarts we work.
But so we'll be a little, we'll be a little, you know, interested in how the whole, the parking plan lays out. So normally I'd say if, I thought this was going to be quick, we'd get down to public hearing for next month, but I don't think it's going to happen tonight. You guys got a little bit more work to do. So once you get that submittal in, the quicker you can get it in.
Okay.
Quicker we can get you back and hopefully get you guys moving forward.
Sounds good.
Have any questions for us?
I don't think so.
I have a question. Did you say, um, how long that, um, those shipping containers will be there?
Uh, so typically it's just for the holiday season. So they might arrive September, October, and then be gone by the end of the year.
Are they, and then are they being moved out like during that time, like on a weekly basis or something?
Uh, I think they're moved in two at a time. I have it here. Here we go. Uh, they're delivered, two containers per delivery over the course of about one week. So actually that most of them come within a one week span. I'm not sure how they, they leave or what's the timeframe for that.
Yeah. The only reason I bring it, bring it up is because I'm just thinking, you know, they're dropping off all these containers up against the residential zone. At certain times of day or night, it might be a disturbance. I don't know if it's like cycling in and out or just like one and done until the end of the season.
No, I see what you're saying. Cause you have all the houses back here, right? So they showed up at three in the morning and dropping off fifty, fifty steel containers at one clip. I'd be a little upset too. Yeah. All right. If you could just put that in, uh, when you resubmit like the narrative, maybe talk to corporate and find out from them what their actual delivery and removal schedule is, that would be great.
And that's something too, that the board, you can include as part of a condition of any action you take, you know, restrictions on those delivery times. What's that?
At least for our A containers.
Yeah. Well, that's a good point. Yeah. I mean, the kind of cooperation between the two entities. You know, I think Kelly may have weighed on like the seeker thing, right? Is, you know, presumably the town holding lead agency. Maybe that's a question for the applicant is, um, what's the status of your application in the town and, you know, what steps have they taken on this?
Uh, we're currently outstanding permit with them. We, we have not come to a resolution.
But you've been before their planning board presumably or?
Well, we were supposed to have been, but they never sent us the invite that we were going to be on the meeting. So we didn't know.
Oh, so you missed your appearance?
Yes.
Gotcha.
So you're still waiting? You still, do you know when you rescheduled?
Um, so we're actually working on a building expansion project on this Walmart as well, which is totally within the town of Monroe.
Yeah.
So we're trying to just put both of those on the same meeting. Um, we're waiting to hear back about when that will be.
Okay. All right. It just, it'd be help, like Natalie, it'd be helpful if we all could kind of did it all together. So we're not making you.
Right.
Do double work. All right. Anything else? Phil, anything off the top of your head? No. Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Have a nice holiday. Last but certainly not least, Monroe Commons. Review revised materials for proposed, proposed site plan for clearing and grading associated with development on an adjacent property in the town of Monroe. Said property is located on Ninninger Road and is known as the Village of Redback Maps. Section two, two, five, block one, lot thirty. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name is Jacqueline Cohen. I'm an associate at the law firm Zerran and Steinmetz. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Monroe Ninninger LLC. Also with me tonight is Mark Seemers from Pierce, Zack and Fow, the project engineer. So as you may recall, the applicant is proposing to develop a property on Ninninger Road in Monroe with a mixed use commercial development that will include hotel, retail and office uses known as Monroe Commons. They are seeking site plan approval from your board for clearing and grading on an adjacent parcel in the village of. on an adjacent parcel in the Village of Woodbury, um, that is necessary for construction of a park, uh, for parking lot and driveways on the Monroe parcel for the project. Um, so just to give you an update of where we are, um, so since we last appeared before your board, um, the Town Monroe Planning Board has completed the secret, their secret review. Um, in August, they adopted their finding statement, um, for the project, and then in October, they issued site plan, special use permit, and wetlands permit approval. Um, so since then, um, the applicant has been working on completing the conditions of approval, um, including seeking site plan approval from your board. Um, so we're here tonight to continue review of your, the project with your board, specifically the clearing and grading component on the Woodbury parcel, um, and ultimately request that your board approve the site plan, um, because the proposed grading and clearing is necessary, um, to accommodate the location of the proposed parking and driveways, um, which will allow for, um, fire truck access around the building, um, and the removal of trees will be adequately mitigated by the stabilization of the graded slope and landscape plantings. Um, so I'll turn it over to Mark just to take you through the plan, um, and then we can answer any questions that you might have.
Which, which of the forty-five sheets would you be best to go to?
Um, well, let's start with There you go. So, good evening, I'm Mark Seemers from Peter Zach and Fow. Jackie gave you a good overview of where we stand with the project, and, um, basically there's, there's not much to our proposal in the village. We were before you, I believe, in December of twenty-twenty-two and also December of twenty-twenty-three, and, uh, the proposal in the village hasn't changed since then. We're proposing a two-on-one slope being graded into the village parcel to allow us to construct the, uh, loop road around the proposed commercial building and some parking. Um, we believe that this is beneficial for the village, the town, the applicant, wildlife, um, in that we have a two-on-one graded green slope as opposed to a large concrete retaining wall. And that's basically it. We have a, uh, grass stormwater swale at the bottom of the slope, which will pick up any runoff and run it around the project to the ultimate design point, um, and mitigating the peak runoff from the site, uh, that's tributary to the area, and, um, we've done a lot of work with the design and the environmental, um, reviews to get to this point. So I'd like to ask, answer any questions and try to move the process forward.
Questions for the board from the applicant or for the applicant from the board? No, not right now? Take it away.
Okay. Um, so I think, you know, a good introduction from the applicant regarding, uh, the status of their project with the town, it sounds like they've secured the approvals from that agency. Um, you know, again, the applicant concluded their seeker review with the Town of Monroe, and at this point, you know, you have the information that you need to authorize the preparation of a finding and statement, oh, I'm sorry, a finding statement as being in an involved agency, um, under Seeker and for your action. So our memo, uh, you know, heavily talks about Seeker and we followed sort of, um, the outline of the FEIS and the DEIS where, uh, you know, those topics are being discussed and sort of the remaining comments we have for the applicant and the board to, you know, consider and work through. So, um, regarding impacts to land use and compliance with zoning, uh, the applicant's letter to the board indicated that they do not believe that ridge preservation applies to this application, noting that, um, you know, the code heavily discusses impacts, you know, and design points related to structures, you know, materials, lending structures within, like, under the tree line and things of that nature. Um, in our opinion, the code does require a ridge preservation review for clearing and grading operations within the village, and from a practical standpoint, I think that's appropriate because if, you know, an applicant comes in and grades an acre of land on a hillside, all of a sudden it's opening up that view shed to anything behind it, um, you know, and again, removing those natural buffers, um, you know, and the view shed of the, the hill, if you will, or the ridge, um, you know, from the view corridors. So I think that our memo discusses why, you know, A, we think it's applicable to the project, but also the specific considerations, you know, not, obviously it's not colors and materials, you know, that the board is gonna be looking at for this application, but the preservation of specimen trees and, you know, limiting the tree clearing to the maximum extent possible. To that point, the applicant did conduct a tree survey, um, and identified all the trees that are greater than twenty-four inches in diameter, both on the town and the village property. Your code, um, actually requires the consideration of any trees that are greater than eight inches in diameter, so I think that, you know, the board and the applicant should discuss whether or not that tree survey should be updated, uh, you know, within the village property, oh, sure.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you?
Yeah, it's okay.
Um, we did update the tree survey with the FEIS, it was, we ended up submitting with the FEIS a nine-sheet tree survey
Okay.
that showed all trees on the Monroe and the Woodbury parcel that are eight-inch and greater
Oh, okay.
with, um, a tree list throughout the sheet
I saw the list, yeah.
that shows what the tree is and if it's being removed or not.
Okay. Um, I think I missed that, I think I had only seen the plan showing the twenty-four inches or greater, but I know that the plan that I reviewed showed, um, you know, essentially the applicant would be removing the trees that are twenty-four inches greater in diameter and then replacing them within the Village of Woodbury property, so it was like a twenty to twenty, one-to-one ratio. So whatever the difference is between that eight-inch and twenty-four-inch removal, you know, the board may want to consider whether or not additional trees would be planted and/or if anything could be saved. And again, whether or not things could be saved may be impractical, depending on the cut in certain areas, um, you know, and whether or not they would be undermining roots and things like that, but, you know, planting new things is always something to consider. So, Mark, I don't know if you, if, if I'm incorrect on the plantings, I think it's just the twenty-four inches were going to be offset?
Um, I would have to review the, uh, landscape plan, I don't recall how many were actually on there, but it is a two-on-one slope, so it is mainly a, um, grass, it's a, I believe it's a steep slope
Yes.
seeding mixture that's being put on there.
Right.
And then there are some trees being planted with a, a little, um, block tree wall that
Sure.
allows it to grow, I believe that was from, um, Steve Esposito's office did that.
Okay.
Um, I do have eleven, some eleven-by-seventeen copies of the tree survey, if you'd like to, can I pass these out to you now?
You can go ahead. I really feel like I saw that in, uh, thank you.
Yeah, I think the one I saw just showed the twenty-four inches, but, um...
Probably, it may not be that easy to see on eleven-by-seventeens, but...
And then I think, um, you know, to that point about these being steep slopes post-construction, um, you know, confirming that the species would do well in that kind of an application is something that we noted in our memo, and whether or not the species were like native to what's on this property already, so that's something for the applicant to consider with the board. Um, let's see what else. With respect to soils and geology and topography, again, the biggest thing in the village is that there, you know, is, uh, they're cutting into the slope. Um, I think they propose to essentially take the cut in the village side and use it as fill in the Monroe side, but ultimately the project will require, um, fill to be imported to the Monroe side. So, you know, the, basically what I'm saying is the village cut does not equal the fill that's needed for Monroe, so they were, there will be, um, extra generation of trips to support the development. But, um, with that being said, uh, we just wanted to note that there is a permit that's required from the village, Village Board for that, because the code requires a permit, um, when fill is taken from inside the village and moved outside of the village, so that's something for the board and applicant to consider.
Would that be a, um, condition of a, of a site plan approval?
So my recommendation at this point is that it be, um, part of the finding statement, but yes, ultimately, I think it could be a condition of any action that the board takes. A soils importation plan should be provided, um, you know, again, as, because properties to, in the village are located to the northeast and east and south of this application, so, you know, you want to make sure that any traffic that's being conducted on those roadways, um, you know, the roadways are being cleaned and maintained and that the soils adjacent and upstream of any regulated water bodies surrounding this property, you know, are, um, being handled appropriately. Um, we did contact the DEC as part of this application because of the SWIP review, so the disturbance in the village is two-point-three acres, um, the, obviously the development in Monroe is more substantial. What would happen in the village is really just, you know, SWIP for erosion and sediment controls would be required, where what's happening in Monroe requires post-construction stormwater management. Um, it gets a little funny about the village and the town both being MS fours and really who should execute that form, but the DEC did state that, um, both the village and town should be executing that, so the village planning board should be looking at that SWIP, um, pertaining to the portions relevant to the construction on the village side. So we are in the process of reviewing that and will provide comments, um, to the applicant prior to their next appearance. Um, that information from the DEC came late last week. Um, let's see...
So does the SWIP, so the SWIP's been reviewed and accepted by the Town of Monroe and everything flows to the Town of Monroe infrastructure, um, at Nininger. How, how is it separated? How are you going to review it, the SWIP, as a separated between the two municipalities?
Yeah, we're just gonna review it for the sections that impact the village, so, you know, I'm not gonna be looking at the calculations for the post-construction stormwater management and attenuation of flows and things like that, I'm gonna be looking at the erosion and sediment control sections and making sure that it meets all the requirements of the village code in addition to the general permit. And then ultimately, the village will have to execute that MS four acceptance form, you know, for the portion within there. So I wouldn't suggest for you to, like, create two SWIPs or anything like that, I think we'll review what you have, you know, and then again, in that acceptance form, we're gonna note in that box, you know, how we reviewed it and, you know, pertaining to the village, this is why it's accepted type of thing. Does that make sense?
And more than, so we would have to file two separate notice of intents with the DEC?
Yeah, because I think you can only upload one acceptance form, correct? I don't know, I don't know, well, let's, maybe we can confirm that with Natalie Brown, who is the one who said that we did need to, the village needed to execute the MS four acceptance form, how that is effectuated, you know, through their end form submissions. Also, as far as, so the next section is the impacts to surface waters, so the applicant did confirm that the DEC-regulated water body does not cross the village property, but it runs adjacent, so we've been carrying this comment because that water body shows up on your water quality protection overlay map. Um, so what we've suggested now to the applicant at this point is if it runs adjacent to the village property, similar to the Ridge Road application, does that fifty-foot and hundred-foot buffer extend into the applicant's property where they're proposing grading and construction? So we'll just want to, you know, know that the buffer areas, you know, do not extend on the property and accordingly, you know, whether or not the, it's impacted by the village code. Uh, we talked about the tree removal already.
I believe, if I could just jump in on the stream, um, I believe our, um, wetland scientists confirmed that the stream was about two-hundred feet away from the, um, the grading and clearing activities, I think we would be outside of that buffer.
Okay, so then I would, you know, I've asked for it in a map to show that, um, you know, but if you want to provide a certified letter, that would be acceptable as well. In my opinion.
That's up to the board too.
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, what else? Talked about the SWIP already, and then, um, Phil had comments on this application to the DEIS submission, um, and as part of the preparation of the finding statement, I think you'll want him to weigh in on the FEIS and any concerns of the village, because I think, you know, traffic is obviously an important consideration for this, um, ultimate development. Uh, regarding historic and cultural resources, we're just looking for the applicant to confirm that the village parcel was included in the SHPO submittal, um, it wasn't clear based on the FEIS submission. Um, the visual resources and community character, the board typically requires a zero-point-one foot candle, uh, level at property lines. I think the applicant's correspondence indicates that they have worked with the lighting designer to reduce the levels to the maximum extent practical, but in some areas, it's above that, um, typical requirement. And again, you know, from a practicality standpoint, you would require the point-one foot candles because of how it would impact adjacent parcels, you know, and the glare and the spillage, but the property to the north is obviously undeveloped and the grading, you know, sets this property so low to the property to the north where, in our opinion, the spillage really probably wouldn't be all that impactful and, but that's something that the board should consider, you know, if you want the applicant to, you know, really work on reducing those levels to that typical requirement. And then our memos suggests, um, you know, as part of your finding statement, you know, you would want the fixtures to be, uh, you know, A, I'm sorry, IDA, dark sky compliant, you know, uh, shielded such and such like that, so all of your typical things except for the zero-point-one foot candle requirement. Um, the applicant agreed to adhere to the more restrictive requirement for construction hours, so that should be carried to your finding statement. Uh, they confirmed that access for grading operations would occur from the town property, that should be carried to your finding statement. A public hearing is required at the appropriate time. And then as far as the plans that have been submitted, the applicant did address most of our comments, so really from a site plan perspective, um, you know, I think we've noted that those boulder walls that you suggested will be planted around, the trees, um, should be shown as a detail, and then, uh, the plans call for a temporary swale, but obviously, this is a permanent swale on the village side, so a detail for that should be provided. But I think we're pretty much done from a review standpoint, um, you know, on the site plan part of it, except for what, you know, may come of the SWIP review.
Okay. Just, I just want to, um, let you know that the proposed grass swale detail
Uh-huh.
is on site detail sheet one, which is page twenty-four.
Is that labeled a temporary detail?
No.
Or a temporary swale?
The temporary swale is on the erosion control details.
Okay.
It's labeled proposed grass swale detail.
Okay. What sheet is that, I'm sorry?
It's drawing twenty-four.
Okay. So we'll take a look.
And I went through, and I'm not saying you didn't submit it, but I can't find it in the docs that we have, so can you just send this over electronically, please, to the building?
Yes.
Department?
It should be attached to, I don't know what FEIS files you have, it should be attached to that, but we will...
I was given the one that Monroe sent to us, so it's whatever Monroe, I didn't go to their website and get it, it's whatever their building department sent to us. I just quickly downloaded, I can't, I just, I'm scrolling quick, I may be scrolling past it, but...
Okay.
Chris, one thing on this, um, so Colliers has a contract with Orange County DPW and as part of the circulation, uh, we reviewed this also on behalf of Orange County DPW. So part of, uh, I think our original comments were from November of twenty-three, and then in June and July, the county had us do further reviews. Uh, there was certain off-site mitigation that we've made sure got folded into the findings that, be, before Monroe adopted their findings, there were certain things that the county wanted to make sure were carried over. For example, at the intersection of Nininger and Dunderburg, there were certain improvements, there was reference to a, a requirement that Moshe Gardens had, but, for example, there was a left turn lane that was gonna be constructed, so the findings stated that if that wasn't constructed by Moshe Gardens, that this application would have to do that. So there's already, like, a, a base, I'll call it, of items that are in the finding statement, uh, specific to those locations along Nininger, and there's, you know, several in the Town of Monroe, et cetera, that the county was concerned with, but, uh, we would just build on that in terms of the finding statement, so...
Okay. Does the board have questions for Natalie or Phil?
Very thorough, thank you.
So we've got to, uh, make a referral to the building inspector, right, as far as if it's subject to Ridge President ARB?
Well, actually, because they provided that eight-inch tree survey, um, you know, I think that the, as long as the applicant doesn't disagree, um, you know, the board can consider the information that was submitted by them and ultimately, you know, decide whether or not the tree clearing is acceptable or whether there should be additional plantings, and then you've pretty much hit those requirements of your code, so, you know, whether, you know, if, it's really, you know, you can implement those conditions, um, you know, and, and after your review, find that either A, what the applicant is proposing you know, and, and after your review, find that either A, what the applicant is proposing is acceptable or not. I just don't know, it's up to you. Sorry. It may not matter, is what I'm getting at, you know? So, um, you know, as, as long as, say, for instance, you're, if you say, you know, we would want to see more plantings, and the applicant opposes and says, you know, it's not necessary because ridge preservation isn't required, then you would want to go back and say, to your building inspector, is it? But I don't think that you're opposing to the board reviewing it in this way, but it's up to you.
So just to clarify, reviewing it in what way? I just want to...
So the board is considering whether or not this needs to be referred to the building inspector for a determination on whether or not ridge preservation repli, applies. So, you know, again, it's, you know, if you want to comply with the conditions that may be imposed as part of their ridge preservation review, you know, if you wouldn't object to them, then it's really, there's no reason to refer it to the building department.
Yeah, we can take another look at it. I know that, when we looked at the provisions, we didn't think that they applied because they appeared to apply to structure, like, clearing and grading and structures within the village. And also, you know, through the secret process, we did do some visual, some visual studies that show that there would be no significant adverse impacts there. And also, you know, with the slope stabilization and plantings, there should be no adverse impacts there. But of course, we can take a look at that offline, and maybe talk offline and see how we respond to those comments.
Yeah, so it's up to the board.
Hold your thoughts for a second.
Is it time thing, or is there a fire?
Uh, fire. Sorry, Natalie, you were just about to say something.
Yeah, I was going to say, um, you know, it's, it's to the board's discretion. Maybe you do want to refer it just so that the answer is what it is, and then there's no questions moving forward. You know what I mean? It doesn't hurt. It's up to you guys. It could be moot, or it could be, you know, clarifying.
Feelings, thoughts, comments, personal?
Just reading it quick, I'm a little concerned with three hundred trees.
I am, yeah, CJ.
I said, reading quick, I'm a little concerned with three hundred trees coming down, so.
Six hundred.
Well, it says three, it says two ninety-four in Woodbury.
And you said you did, when you provided to Monroe, you have visual studies of what it's going to look like afterwards? Like, are there renderings, or? I don't recall.
Yeah, we'd have to look back, but we can include that in.
Renditions would add value.
We like pictures. So really, tonight is adopting the FEIS statement?
You should authorize the preparation of a finding statement.
Yeah. Consistent with our, or your discussions for the evening?
Yeah, it's, it'll be a draft so that you have a chance to review it and decide if you would modify any language and things like that, or add anything, or remove it.
Okay.
We would also ask that your board consider setting a public hearing tonight, just because there seems to be minimal comments on the site plan. And many of the environmental comments either been addressed, or we can easily respond to them.
How's the board feel about setting a public hearing?
Are we ready for that?
I'm asking what the board feels. I haven't seen the tree survey yet, so this is the first topic.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I ran, I ran through it really fast, though. I probably could use a little more time looking at it, but...
Yeah, I think the public might want to also see some of this visualization.
Okay. There's that, there's that answer. But I will offer a motion to have a draft FEIS statement drafted for this board. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So I think, you know, what I'll do is maybe work with Kelly and Phil, and I'll take the lead on that, if that's okay.
That's fine. You certainly don't want me doing it.
Yeah, well, I just figure...
It'll be in hieroglyphics if you get it.
Has the Monroe board declared themselves the lead agency?
Yeah.
Yes, the secret process from Monroe is complete.
It's all complete in Monroe. They're waiting on us. I don't think there's anything else, right?
I don't think so. We do have it, actually. Yeah, so I'll forward that to you, yeah, yep. Phil was asking if we had their Monroe's finding statement, and we do. So I'll forward it to him, so he can make sure that those comments that he had on behalf of the county are included and what may need to be additional.
Have, have you been copied on that finding statement?
The board received it, I think, as part of, um...
I believe we submitted a copy with our letter, I think.
I do know I have one. I don't know if it came in as part of the notice from the town indicating that they completed their FEIS review or if it was part of the site plan submission, but, um...
August fifth? Was that, is that right?
August twentieth, I think.
Okay, so last FEIS I have is from seven twenty-nine twenty-four. So if there's one after that, then I don't have the most current one.
Okay.
Maybe that's why, maybe that's why the, we don't have this, is that maybe we're a plan set behind?
Well, this isn't part of the plan set.
Okay, so this you're going to send to us separately, right, to make sure we have?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll also make sure you have a copy of Monroe's finding statement, because I think that will help in, in informing you on some of the review that was done.
Yes.
And let you know that the requirements in that finding statement is also being added to the site plan, which unfortunately, unfortunately adds a sheet. But there will be a full sheet of just notes of the Monroe's finding statement requirements.
And we'll take that all digitally, we don't need, no paper, please, no paper.
Yes.
Works for us.
I'd rather add more hard drive space than more file cabinet space anywhere. All right, any other questions for us?
Do we have to, are we referring, not referring to the building inspector?
That's up to all, that's what the board's feelings.
I think we should.
All right.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we have it sent to, have Natalie draft a referral to the building inspector to have him opine on the application of Ridge Pres.
Sounds good.
Just cover the bases, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Second?
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Now I think we got everything for tonight.
I think so.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
You, too. All right, so, I mean, no further business before the board? I'll offer a motion to close.
One second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.